Okay, it is June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, past the hour of seven P M. I am all tag of the ferry. I am the chair of the North Borough zoning board of appeals. See. The review of chapter two of the acts of twenty twenty five, an act extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of Jersey and signed to law on March twenty eighth, twenty 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 five. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation via the link listed in the agenda. Okay, so when I call your name, please, and I'll say you are able to hear. And you are present, Jack Carney?
Yes.
John Mar?
Yes.
Suzie Sizeliko?
Yes.
And I'm here as well. For town staff, we have Bob Ferrer Rico?
Yeah.
Terry?
Carrie Andrew.
And Brenda?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, okay, so first up on the agenda is. You can probably read. Brad is still there, right? You guys want to do minutes? For? The May eighth, twenty twenty five, and the May twenty seventh? All right. So we have. Consideration of CBA minutes from the May twenty twenty five meeting. Has everyone had a chance to read them over? Are there any changes or adjustments? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Okay, so I checked my motion to approve, seconded by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So next up is the meeting minutes from May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. And does everyone have a chance to read them, review them? Any changes? Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Motion to approve that draft.
You can second that. Okay, check made a motion to approve, seconded by John. All those in favor? Aye, aye. Alright. So we probably get started then. Currently, we have present four members of the zoning board of appeals. So first up on the agenda is a public hearing to consider petition submitted by Angel Burgos for use and dimensional variances. A groundwater special permit and site sign approval to convert an existing single family home into a two family home located at nineteen East Main Street. Map fifty three parcel one one in the business east zone, Bishop. So Mr. Burgos, you're here to present the, to ask for a relief from, for variances, a special permit. Do you want to start just by introducing yourself then? Who's looking then? We can kind of just give a overview of what exactly it is you're looking for.
I'm looking for a nineteen East Main Street to make it a five bedroom dwelling. And here with me is Daniel Turner. And you have all the plans and whatever else was passed, made and put forward.
Okay.
So you can decide them.
Right.
I'm Brad here.
Yep. So Brad is on. Brad, can you hear us? I'm sorry, can you?
Yep, okay.
Yep, Brad, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Great. Alright, so I guess. So just to kind of recap. Or give an overview, right? So could you currently describe what is the current use of the property as it exists today?
It's empty. Sorry, it's empty. It's empty, it's empty.
Right, so I guess what was the last use then? Of, of the property?
I bought it like, I don't know when.
It's about eight years ago.
Sorry?
I'm the neighbor.
Okay.
About eight years ago, when the house sold it to the person he bought it.
Okay, so if you want, maybe you'll do the backstory?
Sure.
As you said, about eight years ago, I was driving.
Ballpark. Ballpark.
Ballpark, eight years ago. I was driving by, notice construction activity going on. They. They had a permit to work on a deck, and when I stopped, they had the entire inside of the house completely gutted out. And reframed as if they were going to do a two frame. I told them they had to stop because they didn't have a permit for that kind of work. And they did. I gave them instructions to go to the CBA for permission and variances for to build duplex, this building. Previously, a long time ago, the building was two family, it was converted to a single family. Bottom line is, this board allowed to be reverted back to two family. As variance of one year, nothing was under exercised on that variance, and the variance expired. The building's been sitting for quite a while. Since then, Mr. Burrows is the new owner. Building remains gutted to the outside studs with interior framing mostly replaced. So Burrows came through, he wanted to know what they could do to get it back to a duplex. And he gave me the information. They're here too. So the building right now, for the past eight years, has been vacant. But it is tactically classified to friendly as we speak. Because it's not a previous variance. Because the previous variance was never exercised.
Okay, so the decision in twenty eighteen, right, that was never acted upon, right? That was a, that was a variance, that was a special permit. Bylaws have changed since then. A special permit, I was on board. For a, to change it from a single family home into a two family home? Where you had one unit was two bedrooms and one unit was one bedroom?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Just so that I can, there is space that on two, twenty twenty, the house is considered a two family. Okay, where's that information from?
In the packet I emailed yesterday, or you may not have received it until today.
Well, my question is.
I have the assessment.
Okay, is that from the assessors?
This is the assessors, and I have field card here that says it's a two family.
Okay.
And in twenty twenty, somebody switched it back from a single family, where the yellow. Were two families, so it's been.
You have to remember one thing.
It's a twenty twenty, as twenty twenty.
You need to remember one thing.
Okay.
The assessors, whatever they call it, has nothing to do with zoning. Okay, as a zoning enforcement officer, it's my job to determine what is a single family, two family, three family, a couple. Okay, they only observe what they see, but they have no co-enforcement. And they have no way in terms of determining what is or is not a specific use. Okay, just want to make that clear.
So I guess the question I've had is, like, has this house been vacant for eight years?
Yeah.
Alright, so it hasn't been used and really ancient?
Right.
If it was used as a two family, you would lose any sort of two family. Pre-existing, right?
Right.
So as it exists today, it exists as a single family, which is why what the applicant is asking for requires essentially four variances, special for inside point of view, etc. We have that, so, right, so what you're looking for in terms of the variances, right, are essentially two dimensional variances. Because there is not enough frontage, right, for a duplex. Roughly speaking, you have ninety three feet, you need about a hundred and fifty. You also need a variance for the total lot area relief. Roughly speaking, you have seventeen thousand feet, it needs about twenty thousand square feet. You also need a use variance because duplexes are not allowed in the business east zoning. That is another use variance. You also need a groundwater variance because it is in groundwater three.
Yep.
And it is, does not have the size lot required for groundwater three for a duplex. And then the final thing is a special permit for the two family in the groundwater three district. Right, which also incorporates a segment field.
So you have a variance for use, you have a variance for potential are needed, the minimum lot size frontage requirements. One million ground fifty respectively. These variants of the minimum lot size within a groundwater protection only district.
So, I guess. Well, I'll start my questioning with the septic system. Okay, because I think that that, there's been some different information that I've seen, right? So can you provide sort of, what is the current status of the septic system? Like, when was, when was the last time it was, you know, redone, cleaned, approved by the Board of Health? Sort of like all that information, I guess. I guess we can start with, yeah. Just whatever information you have on septic system, current state, what's it built for? Are there any deed restrictions?
Built for a five bedroom house. I have the certificate of compliance. I, I have a copy, I don't, it's on my flash screen, but I have seen it. I handed it to the health agent, the health agent has reviewed it, proved it. And they closed out the five bedroom septic system. So it's in place.
Okay, and so when was, when was, approximately, when was that septic system built? So I feel like last time we had, in twenty eighteen, there was a question of whether it was new at the time, or it was soon to be?
There was, it should be on that sheet. Two thousand seventeen? Previously, it was a three bedroom septic.
So it was a three bedroom at the time?
At the time.
So in twenty seventeen, it was rebuilt and approved by Board of Health for a five bedroom?
Right. We have the engineering, we have plans, we have the approval, the permit, we have, we certified as well.
Okay.
So what is in the ground now is a title five compliant, five bedroom septic system.
Okay. And the approval was from twenty seventeen?
Yeah.
Well, technically, June eighteenth, twenty twenty four, signed off on, but it was installed in seventeen.
June of twenty twenty four?
June eighteen, twenty twenty four, the, uh, signed by, um, uh, you know, June twenty fifth, by Vito, the, the health department.
Vito, well, Vito Colón is the engineer. Would it be okay for me to copy that? So let's see.
Sure.
I have a copy of this.
But you don't need to make that be.
No.
You can say, okay, alright, okay. Okay, so in terms of the, the next point then, the, the driveway, right? So with, in about a second from now on here, right, so with, with two family. It's almost regardless of the number of bedrooms, you need four spaces, right, right? Now, when you have a multi-family home, the bedroom is played a role there.
Right.
Right, in the fact that if you have one bedroom, you need one space. But if you have two or more bedrooms, you need two spaces plus ten percent for visitors and stuff.
That's for multi-family.
That's for multi-family, right?
That's for duplex.
This is a duplex. So the baseline requirement for parking spaces is four.
Right.
Okay. You mentioned something about their plan to expand the current driveway?
Yes, that's the thing.
I don't think I saw, I saw the interiors lines, the renderings. But I did not see.
Basically, we're going to do two existing parking spaces and deep them. So it makes four.
So the parking plan is basically a two by two?
Yeah. Luckily, I took that then.
With the tandem spots, with the tandem spots?
Yeah, they were, they're double booked.
Because I think like, you know, when I drive by the site, I think the one thing that I mean, I would just, my only concern is the sidewalk there, right? So not, not having when you think about duplexes, you think about multiple bedrooms in duplex, right? I picture more density on a lot that's not very big, and so the concern is cars, right? So I think like, is there any potential to sort of expanding the driveway so that there's other places that cars could park? Right, in, on the property? I guess that's a question.
Seems to be big enough to do that.
Okay. Do you have, do you have a plan of the, the extension, I guess?
I'm the one.
I don't have any. Yes, I have a plan. Uh, you guys feeling on that question, sir? So, yeah, I guess we can probably get to the, the driveway in a few minutes.
Yeah.
What's in, so then the other thing too is, you know, just kind of driving by the property, like, are there any other, like, outside site improvements that you were planning to do with this property, right? Like, just from my visual of walking by dog pass property. You know, there's a front porch that doesn't have railings. The walkway is somewhat who's, I guess you could call it, the driveway is, you know, not in good condition, but you know, if you were planning to put fine, there's a side entrance that doesn't have a walkway there, it's not, not very well lit. Obviously, it's been vacant for eight years. I guess like, is there a plan to sort of update the site to that it is sort of like an acceptable multi-family duplex that, you know, you can find elsewhere than?
Well, I was just notified about a week ago about that. I don't have, I haven't had time to like look.
Okay.
There's someone that give me a, I didn't sort.
Okay. Which, which that's, that's fun. I, I think from, from my perspective, and I think, you know, more of that's the comments from the letter. I think those types of site plan improvements are things that are usually pretty regular for what we're looking for, right? Like, you know, when you're asking for the four variances, structure permit, to put a use that doesn't exist in this part of the neighborhood, right? I think the offset to that is obviously, you know, board and others are looking for some sort of improvement to the problem, right? Something that will allow for, you know, the increase in the density of the property, right? I mean, you can understand sort of there are bylaws in place that prevent sort of high-density things going in, you know, you can look for relief, you know, what is that sort of offset there? But, I guess then, you know, if you can come up with things that could help there, I think it would be helpful. I can talk about septic. And. Did you get a verification about the increase in post knowledge runoff on it?
Yes. I got an email from Dr. and how the town in here, seeing the answer, well, true.
And that is with the new sort of proposal, okay? I guess I'll, I'll stop there. I guess all the board members, does anyone have any specific questions? I'm not sure if there's a, we'll get to a decision on this tonight, she says.
I guess I don't know what the hardship is.
Okay.
Um, you know, watch out, watch out, shape is not a hardship, I'm saying, lots that have floor chop. So what, what is the hardship that we're looking at here?
Okay, I mean, that's a question for you. I guess, do you want to just kind of go over, right? So like variances. You know, there's three different problems that you need, sort of like, how do you define sort of the hardship that is, you know, specify anything to sort of allow for amendments?
You can ask, you don't have to.
What do you mean hardship? So. When, you know, board variances in particular, there are sort of sort of very high-level legal take of it is, there's sort of three different things that like you need to prove to the board. Right, in order to, for the variance to be corrected, right? And when you're filling out the application, you sort of ask the questions, right? You know, what are the soil conditions, shape, geography of the structure, right, the signatures from other lots in the neighborhood, right? What is the hardship that is caused by the first factor, right? What is, you know, local relief granted constitute any substantial detriment to the public? You know, these are all sort of basics or questions that, you know, as a board, we need to look at when trying to determine whether or not to grant variance. And because both the, you have both the use and the dimensional, right? I think what Jack is talking about is the fact that, you know, there are four variants that you need to get from, do relate to the dimension, right? So one of them is the frontage. In order to have a duplex, you have to, like, for a hundred and fifty feet, you have ninety three, right? What are the, the three things with regards to that frontage that may, you know, cost hardship? In regards to the, the shape, right? Shape is only, or the size, the size of lies only seventeen thousand square feet. Right, maybe twenty thousand square feet. Coming up with an answer for that, so. You don't have an answer specifically on that today. Like I said, I don't think we're necessarily going to have a decision for you today. So that's something we should take back and sort of reassess and come back next. If that's okay.
I, you know, I did answer the questions on the project integration. With the applicant. Um, there's for the question about hardship. Is, I wrote on there? Just.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I guess Jack, if you ask.
So my question is, if you're legally existing in structure currently, you're just looking to turn it into a two family to create more income for yourself, but you're not changing anything on the lot per se, you're cleaning the house where it is, where it exists. So you're asking us to, to allow this change, but I don't know why I'm allowing the change. So this, this has to be a reason, just, you know, the, the fact that you want to increase your income is not a hardship.
May I?
Sure.
Um, hopefully, this will be helpful. Angel purchased this property in August of twenty twenty four. The property at that time was represented as a two family. We checked with the town, they said it's a two family. That the, the previous owner had got a rezoned in twenty eighteen but never acted upon it, okay? And that all we needed, all Angel needed to do was just, you know, we submit the application, get permits and everything. Here we are, June of twenty twenty five, and we're, you know, we're now getting action on this. So the Angel's dilemma here is I thought it was buying a two, he knew what he was buying, he was buying a shell that a previous owner that, you know, didn't do a great job of it, you know the backstory there. Here he is. He's not a career investor. He's a family man that worked with Angel for many years. He's buying this. It's not going to make him rich. He's kind of pour his heart and soul into it. Rented out to two families. There's a need for housing in North Borough. I'm a North Borough resident for twenty five years. Everything that is taken, he's losing money. His daughter that just finished up her senior college, Stonehill, that's not cheap. This is personal for me, not as a real estate agent, but, you know, what he, what he's what he bought is basically something that you're saying, what's your hardship? The hardship is that he bought something that
Is broken in, checked with the building department. I'm sorry, I'm a realtor too.
Yeah.
You should have done your job, I'm sorry. Okay? And I have to be.
That's kind of, watch it.
I hate to be mean, but
No, that was.
It seems, it seems planning on moving into this property.
No.
Okay, so he's looking at an investment, and we're, you're asking us this board to give four dimensional variances plus a special permit. And I don't see the hardship.
Does it question?
Sure, just clarification purpose, when, when did you reach out to the town to verify it was a?
I, before I bought it, I left messages for somebody to call me back, nobody did. And then we went through the attorney to make sure that it was a two family, five bedroom. And it was, that was what I bought, that's what I thought it was.
The attorney informed you that?
Yep, it was a five bedroom, two family.
The title work and everything, everything except for what we heard, what we heard tonight, that what the field card says and the assessment has taken in twenty twenty was switched from a single family to a two family. And now you're saying it's not. So what can we do to just make, you know, make this right? So yes, Angel has hardships here. What can he do? Because right now he has a money pay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Do you have the documentation or?
The other hardship, excuse me, was that the file was lost several months ago, I don't know, what about a week ago? His file was lost.
Do you have any, so you have documentation trail where it talks about uh, being a two, two, two family structure?
I don't have it with me, but we can get it, yeah.
Oh, you're trying? So I think like, just to kind of step back a second here, like, if you're the hardship that you listed in the application was that it's a pork chop. And I don't want to speak for Jack, but like, you know, to say just, it's a pork chop lot, right? Maybe doesn't, for some people, raise a little bar of being a hardship now. If what you're saying is, well, it's actually this, that's fine. Just, you know, present, I guess, you know, sort of some sort of documentation we can look at that says, you know, it was you have email trails or whatever that say, you know, we were, we thought it was X, Y, and Z, and that's your side of the hardship, right? That's kind of what, where it is, what we're looking for, right? Or at least that. I would like to see, right? So. Yeah, I mean, it's, you could whatever it is you, your hardship is, right? If it's, you were told certain things, then that's the sort of backup, I think, would be helpful. There's, John, you said, you were asking about specifically emails from.
Well, that was, yeah, that's my point. It's basically like community.
So there's like communication you had, or, you know, I think, sorry, Judy, right, you said like you had spoken to, like, if there are things that you filed, or whatever it is that you think makes the case that you're trying to present, I think for us would be helpful, right? Emails. Communication, you know, that sort of thing, right? If, if, you know, the other property owner was saying it was X, it's really Y, then and those are certain things that I think could be helpful to us as a board, and then us as a board will make that determination whether we think it rises to a level of being an actual much, right? Sam also had any other questions with regards to this? I feel like there's some open questions here, so I think we are going to continue this case. Brad, I, I feel like I should probably call on you. Is there anything specific that you have for the applicant at this particular time?
Uh, the only thing I can say is, like what Jack said, the hardship, and the, the major thing that's concerning me is a five bedroom with a, a square driveway. Uh, a a square uh driveway. And I'd like to see what the anticipated changes are to that driveway. Um, you know, personally, I used to live uh or. Have a uh single driveway and what we used to do is just put one car in the street, that's what we want to avoid. And so I lived on a little side road, but uh this is on a main road and we want to avoid that, so I want to see if with a five bedroom. Uh, what the changes to uh the parking situation.
And so I I will just echo Brad's point about the parking, you know, I just think like whatever sort of design you have for the, what the parking could be and. You know, if you just want to think about something that's a little bit more than just two by two, because again. Just. My thought is like. Again, three bedrooms, two bedrooms, that just seems like the potential for a lot more cars than four. I know that what our bylaws say. But. You know, those are standards from our. Uh. Propofth bylaws. Uh, this is also a public hearing, um, so if there's anyone in the public that would like to speak. Or if there's anyone online uh on Zoom, if you could just please raise your hand. Um, and then please state your name and your address um so that we can record that. And you, yeah.
John Burton, I see Senator Junior Matt, which is right next to his property here. I thought I could have heard wrong. I thought, uh, Angel, you said you were going to do a one bedroom and a two bedroom? Do two, two apartments, one is a bed, one bedroom, one was a two bedroom? Did I hear wrong?
You heard me, yeah.
Okay.
So I I will say that the application that we heard in twenty eighteen. Was for one, one bedroom, one two bedroom.
Okay, that's what I was saying.
And that's our, yeah, yep. And so that, um, yeah. So I think the current plan as it exists today is for. Uh, two family with three bedrooms and a two. Okay. Um, I don't see anyone else with their hands raised at the moment. Uh, I guess, are there any other questions or comments from the applicant at this time? I mean, I think that we will probably just continue the case. To our next meeting and just give you some time to sort of. Uh, provide some feedback uh to some of the comments and questions. Um. But, yeah.
Just to like save some time, like for the applicant, also when looking at the pictures of the deck and like you had said, the front deck. Back deck. Do they need railing, some stuff like this? Like, is there any?
Front deck has pictured does not need a front railing and a back. That's not even, the only time you need a railing. Is when the floor surface is more than thirty inches over gray.
Okay.
Okay, so thirty inches is kind of a big step down, it's not required.
All right. Making sure, so and then listening like about um what my fellow members were talking about and knowing real estate, having worked in real estate. Maybe a title search. Like maybe that would be helpful.
Yeah, wait, wait, there was a title search done by when when Angel bought it and everything was clear, I mean.
Yeah, so let's, if you. That might be helpful. Um, for the document, yeah, the the one, no, the one that you did. Like when you were closing, yeah, like for your closing, yeah. Showing that it was a a five bedroom.
Oh, right, you did, yes, okay.
If that shows that it was a five bedroom in the search. Um.
Who's G? No, it's like. Parking was the best.
Um, okay, I just had to confirm, there's two access. Um. Um, okay. Any other questions at this time? Um, so I think if there's probably, there are some open items up here. So John, just from a zoning perspective.
Yep.
See, but basically like. That first row, it's all business.
Yeah.
Right? And then like the house behind it, and then there's a neighborhood.
Yeah, yes, well.
Alright, um, so I think at this time, if anyone has any other questions, uh, I would say their hands raised, um. You know, I'll entertain a motion to uh continue the this hearing. Our nineteen East Main Street, step fifty-three, possible one-on-one, uh, to our July twenty-second. Meeting at seven P M.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Brad?
I'll second, I didn't know you need to say something.
Yeah.
Yeah, they might say.
Yeah.
Uh, alright, so, um. We'll do a roll call vote.
I mean, um, who can Angel get this information to?
Uh, you can send all this information to Lori Combs.
Okay.
So Plan Director, and it's probably best to also C C.
You can C C me, and Lori is usually really good at sending me. Yes.
Yep.
I mean, because I'm here alone without her, um, we'll probably not be able to put this together. So.
Yep, um. So Brad made a motion to continue the meeting toward July twenty-second meeting at seven P M, the second is on Suzy, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Jack, yes? John's, yes? Suzy?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Uh, and I'm a nine as well. Okay. Um. Thank you guys for coming, appreciate it.
Yes.
Alright, um. Okay. Alright, the discussion of D C A M surplus land, um. So I don't know if anyone has been following, um. This, it's been a topic of conversation um recently on the planning board. Um, and was most recently presented. Um, at the select board meeting last night, uh, by Amy Brettsey. Um. Does anyone want to just give like a very high level? Update, um, sure. So. I guess everyone has this thing. Alright, so this is, uh, so D C A M. Which is the Division of Capital Asset Management Maintenance. Say. And you can't get to see the Massachusetts, uh, owns a recent land, uh, was considered, you know, liming tree, so it's sort of a butt, um.
L L.
L L, right, um, and. So what they are looking to do is they are looking for input from um boards uh. In Northborough, specifically the planning board and the zoning board appeals on what are such. So. So, um, in, within your. Uh, you should have also received a uh a letter. Um, a draft letter, I should say. Um. In in the email, that sort of basically lays out. Sort of what are. What the town's thoughts are going to be, um. What we would like to see on this parcel, so I think somebody that we're seeing is going to auction it up. To a developer or someone to buy it. Um, and then they, there's still some debate, whether or not they're going to have free range or if they're by bylaws, how much to do with property. We're supposed to arrive at stage with some comments. Okay, uh, so the planning board has been working uh for the last. Say a couple of weeks, uh, reaching out to local legislators, um, trying to understand exactly what is the role that we play, um. My thought is that, so we, the deadline will be this July eighteenth to provide comments back to the state. Seventy-three, similar around there.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Um, and there's a draft letter being read by the planning board in uh connection with uh Lori, uh, Congress, the planning director as well. Um, which sort of goes through sort of, you know. Some of like what what it is you would like to see, right? Uh, maximum density of four to one meters per acre. Uh, minimum, you know, distance between buildings at forty feet, it's all right there, it's sort of draft law. And so, you know, as the zoning board appeals, any sort of by comments, we can either sort of draft our own letter. Or we can sort of just, you know. If you guys are okay, I can work with Amy and the planning board to sort of come up and represent the zoning board appeals. Uh, on any letter they sent, so that when we send it to the state, it'll save it essentially. From the planning board and C B S, and typically as a. So long as I've been on the C B A, I've been against C B A sort of providing any sort of influence, it's sort of the. quasi judicial part of the. Work, but in this case, what is different is that the state is actually asking us for. Um, you know, I think. Rather than, you know. Happy to hear any comments that anyone has, um, today. Um, but I think my. Thought, initial thought was, um, you know, if you guys get time, if you have a specific. Right comments or whatever with regards to this draft letter. Planning board has a a several meetings set up from between now and whenever the draft letters do to sort of discuss it, um. You know, if you guys. I guess, uh, are okay with it, you know, you can send comments to Lori. Um, she can sort of wrangle some of the comments and then, you know. Essentially deputize myself as Chair of the C B A to represent our interests and work with the planning board to sort of provide. Uh. Help in context. And sort of be the representative. On what? Is it, does anyone have any?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Brad?
Yeah, uh, so. I agree with you, I I think a letter that unites multiple boards would be more impactful. And people would listen to it at the state level if we work with the planning board. Uh, based on that economic development meeting we had back in December at the senior center, it seems as though that we are. In quite a bit of alignment with the planning board. Uh, as far as the direction of the town, as far as housing. Um, I know just based on. Uh, results from the master plan and results from that meeting that, you know, housing, housing is a hot topic. Um, and so. If we align with the planning board and just come as a a. Solidified front, I think that would be a little more impactful than just have multiple boards. Do that, and like we've talked about in the past, we're an appointed board, we're not an elected board, um, so. Uh, just putting one letter together and the fact that, um. You know, housing is not a, I mean, at at the state level, housing is an issue, that's why we're dealing with this right now, but at the town level, housing is not a top priority for the residents, so if. Uh, if the planning board agrees with it, maybe we can put more restrictions on the density. And keep it, um, it's at the M B T A zoning law, like that, that's the max, and then anything below that. Um, but. I'll let the, you know, the majority decide on that, but that's where I'm thinking.
And I think essentially like the the. The basis or the. Main point of the letter, um, that the planning board is writing is like. Kind of at a high level, like, here's what we want to see, right?
Yeah.
In addition, like, we would like to have some sort of like. Site plan review-ish type of overview of. Where applies, so that it's not just. Whatever, it's like, right? Um. So, yeah, I'm looking for anyone who has any. Specific comments, um, doesn't doesn't need to be today, if you have like. Specific things with all, I mean, it was a lot of information, I did send it out today, I apologize for that. But if there are things that, as you're going through it. That come up that you think should be included, if you want to send. Um, an email to Lori, then she can pass it on to me and then. Um, we can make sure that at least the Z B A's interest or. Whatever you think is a benefit could be represented. That's, um.
So you want us to email you comments? Or Lori, your overview?
I'll email Lori, I'll ask. Um, and then, you know, we can. I can make sure that those comments are asked early. I think there's plenty of words playing to meet for the next two weeks to discuss this.
Do they do a response by changing results?
So. I think the plan is that we, the town, Northborough Boards will have a letter to the state by the eighteenth.
By the eighteenth of July.
Yep. Yeah, so which which means if we want to discuss it in public, we'll meet that.
Yeah, sure.
Try to do it tonight so I don't forget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So comments, okay?
Uh, do you have anything that you wanted to add?
I just want to throw something out, and I, in the letter it says. The required minimum density is four housing units per acre. Okay, so that's in the letter, that's our clients. The other thing, and I'm sure Lori is way better knowledgeable than I am about this. Uh, the affordable housing and our ten percent. Affordable housing ratio. Um, I think we're. My opinion is we're really close to that ten percent, which would be. Uh, unfriendly fourth B's. Um, my question, some of these units can be set up as to be capital affordable, uh, to help get out of our. Threshold up over ten percent. Um, because. In my experience here over the past eight years. On average, we build nine houses a year, that's seventy-two houses, we haven't built one. Affordable unit. Okay, so whatever. Ratio we had eight years ago, uh, it's 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 gotten very, very close to that ten percent, so. I would. I would suggest you look at some of these units who designated it as affordable housing. I think the planning board is working on something maybe fifteen percent. Uh, when we talk about um affordable housing with the M B T A's owning. That sort of thing, or higher density housing. Which was, I think, in the past at the town meeting. Um, but I would say, you know, if you have questions about that, I'm not posing for Lori, because it's. It's something that. We all need to be aware of, and then Lori is the one that picked those numbers.
Yeah, I mean, I think just, you know, just to kind of read from uh the letter that Amy had written, you know, like. They are requesting in the letter that if the housing biologic are in fifty percent affordable units, if over ten units be a. Right, and so it's, you know, five and a half acreish property, minimum is four. Units per acre, you're looking at twenty units, there's sort of like, we need to get, you know, make sure that, Bob's point like. We want to say we're ten percent. You're forcing us to add two units. We'd like, you know, towns like have. Some affordable so that it would not be impacting. And degrading sort of the the percentages there, right? Those are the type of comments that I think we're. We're looking to add, I think the planning board obviously is well down the road there. Um, but if there is input, you know, that you guys have specifically, um, you know, it's it's sort of. Somewhat out of our hands, yeah, but at least like the state is looking for input and, you know, playing word. Has, you know, apparently been talking with the state.
Yep, so. That's a great point by Bob, I mean, anything. Should include some forty B, just so we stay above that ten percent threshold, for sure.
Yeah, it's it's one of the things I've kind of argued is that, you know, if you make the minimum requirement ten percent affordable. You're only treading water, you're not getting ahead of the curve. You know, where, you know, the town is going to have more organic housing, you know, um. How do the A D U's come into play with this whole situation? Um, it's, it's it's wise to keep ahead of the curve, that way prevents the unfriendly forty piece. Uh, the other thing I was going to mention is that. Even though these units were a lot by right, you know, state is taking it out of all. Taking it out of the book, so to speak, um, there are reasonable regulations town can impose. On these things, and there are five criteria, building, pay, gas. Right, things like that, it's listed in the list that came out. Um, if if you've got questions or things that you want. Again, it gives you the opportunity to respond. If you have, is about what would be reasonable regulation. Um, that's how I think.
Well, so you can worry, she. Figure it out. Okay. Um. Cool, thank you, Bob. Um. Are there any other comments? Questions regarding some D C A M stuff? Brad, are you good?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, um. We already approved the minutes, uh, so we're organization, um. I have not heard or seen anything from the select board in terms of the final position, so I I want to just kick that can down the road. One more meeting. Um, I will email. Um. Stephanie Bacon and Julianne to make sure that they are. Actively looking at that, um, our next meeting is July twenty-second. Actively looking at that, um, our next meeting is July twenty second, uh, I believe this case that we heard tonight will be the only one at that meeting. Um, since there have been no other applications filed. Um. It would be the other application. Um. That's all, yeah. Yes.
Sunday is our first concert of the season, um, at Ellsworth Park by Seven Disco Lemonade. If you have, I'm gonna refer, have pizza, um, Ash Burger and Yommen's Ice Cream, so. To see everyone there. Won't be as hot. Um, it is, I think it's June thirty, June twenty ninth. The heat is. Due to twenty ninety five.
Alright, I don't have anything else, John, do you have anything else? They also, anything else? Brad, are you good?
I am good. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
I made much to adjourn, uh, roll call vote, uh, Jack?
Hi.
John, aye. Susie?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
I'm not as well. Alright, have a good night, everyone.